Good evening and welcome to the Active School Committee meeting on May 12th, 2022. And we'll begin our meeting by saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do you have any adjustments to the agenda?
There is under nine, I'd like to suggest that we just switch nine, one, and two into the zero to 100 scoring first, and then just move the set your live workshop date after that to end the meeting. And we will be going into a brief executive session this evening.
So you want to move nine, one, two?
To nine, one, to one, and two to two, just swap nine, one, and two. So we'll take zero to 100 first under new business.
And then comments from the public and then?
No, it would be, comments from the public is the same right out, number one, number two. But if you go to the second, on mine it's two pages, on the second page you'll see new business nine point one and nine point two. Do you have that?
Oh, maybe it's on the back.
I have nine point one.
What do you have for nine, one?
Nine point one, I have a hu- zero hundred scoring.
No, that's nine, two.
And that's nine, two. So I'm not sure, I'm using the copy that I got from Lisa and printed it.
Okay.
This is, those are minutes, those are minutes, those are minutes, you want to look at the minutes, you want to look at the agenda.
You look too far ahead.
Those are policies, that's right here, I'll show you, I'll give you mine if you want.
Is there a student that's?
No.
There you go, you want to swap those two?
Just want to swap those two.
Okay, works for me.
Okay.
Get it the wrong page.
Yeah.
Okay, any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to our number three, we just celebration of learning with Sally Buffer.
Excellent, thank you, that's you Sally, can I just intro real quick for you? Sally and I haven't really practiced anything, but I want to thank her for coming in tonight to kind of let you know where STEAM is going. If you remember, the board remembers, a year ago, we developed a STEAM program because our, kind of our computer piece went away, and we brought in a new program and we added some funds to, kind of like startup money, to get this going. Sally presented at the very beginning of the year, it's the very end of the year. So this is just a follow up on how well her year went and some exciting things coming up next week. Thank you.
Perfect. So STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math, we focus a lot on critical thinking, building, coding, and we do have some robotics. And it's exciting for me to learn with the little kids how a program like this can really start to teach them that it's okay to fail. Because I see a lot of our older kids really struggle with that. They don't want to put themselves out there, they don't want to risk failing. And with the little kids, if we can start them where that's okay, that just means we need to try a different way. I'm hoping that I can see some changes in our older kids when our younger kids are at the higher end. So engineering, we do, I have this little video of somebody created a little ramp. They're very excited that it was successful. So again, that's just reiterating the trial and error, because that fell a lot of times. And those are called Kiva planks, they're all exactly the same dimensions. So sometimes in building that can be a little tricky when they don't have any deviation. We did some robotics, there's some little balls that are going to be moving around all over the place. Those have multiple ways to be controlled, but we really tried to focus on coding them rather than just using the remote control drive that everybody wanted to use because it's very easy. But that did have some benefits to it as well. And then we move into coding, that was introduced with Scratch Junior, Code Monkey, and Sphero. The first two were used from kindergarten up to third grade, and then Sphero was only used for the six through eight. And, oh, I knew that picture wasn't going to show up. But we just did this, this past week, and we made, I do actually need some sound, but I know I have other windows open, so I'm not going to, or we'll hear Jeopardy music again. This is Makey Makey, which was made by an MIT professor, and it teaches the kids how to use circuitry and then control their computer with the devices that they create. So you can see all the wires that create the circuit, and then we utilized foil and cardboard and then created kind of a piano. This is actually, yeah. And so he could play the piano with the circuit that he made with Makey Makey on his computer. So that was kind of cool. And then this is an eighth grade project that we just finished up, and this was the exciting thing, I believe, that you were referencing, that we're going to do next week. We're heading to the lake and they can try out their submarines. If you were here last year, I brought a sample in so you could see what that looked like. And it really goes underwater, it really drives, and I think a few kids added the camera cable on, so we're going to try to see what, if anything, the GoPros can pick up in the lake. So this was really cool because it's things that the kids don't really get exposure to at this level. So there was drilling and cutting, soldering, and some really technical directions that the kids really just wanted to look at the pictures from there. And we had an engineer from the shipyard come, and he was at all of these meetings, he's my husband, but he was at all of the scheduled time that we had to build this. And there was lots of questions from the kids, and we kept saying, we're happy to help you with questions, but you've got to read the directions. Like, if we come over to you and we're like, where are you on the directions? And you're like, I don't know, we don't know either, so let's back up and do that. So that was very successful, and hopefully it's even more successful once we make it to the lake. But the kids seem really excited about it, and there's some kids in eighth grade that they're just ready to not be in eighth grade anymore, I think. And it was nice to see that this could kind of bring them back and focus and the whole nine, so that was pretty cool. And I run a stock market game as well, that's actually a national program, it's called SMG. And we actually had one of our groups place first in Maine for the elementary school level, which means that they earned the most money for the spring quarter. So they were very excited, they had a little prize package and, yeah.
Awesome. What grades do that?
And that's it, that is fourth and fifth. So we're having fun down in STEAM.
Seems like it.
My kids love it every week, they come home and they just talk about it all the time.
Oh, good.
Quinn was like, I can't wait, one day we'll log in on my computer and you can play my video game.
We're doing flocks, I didn't even put that in there, but yeah.
So I bet some of the other parents have similar experiences.
Yeah, they're, they're creating video games as well, so there's a tactile piece to that, or they can just use their computer completely, so they're pretty excited about that one, yeah.
It's good to hear that some of the eighth graders that have pretty much checked out, this brings them back because it's a hands-on, a hands-on activity.
Yes, and one of the students that can be a bit of a challenge, I was really happy to see during the soldering piece, he was having a lot of success in that, and his peers were going to him for help. And I think when you have a student that that doesn't really occur in the traditional classroom settings, it really does a lot for their confidence and just their self-being. So that was really cool to see too.
Thank you so much.
Sally, thank you very much, you're good.
All right, our next one, number four, is the COVID update. I did give you the packet, I told the board we won't be giving these packets anymore for a while. What we'll do is, unless there's a big change in COVID, what we'll be doing is, I'll have a packet that we can share if we need to, and we'll just explain where we are. On the COVID picture right now, we're in a medium, we're still in the medium category. And there's a lot of it around, the counts are up in lots of places. Some counties are worse off than we are, but hospitalizations are up this week. So there are, you know, and there are a lot of people that are just catching up. So even people who have been vaccinated and had booster shots, some of them still get it, not as severely, but they still get it. So, so that's the update on COVID. We're good, we don't have any in the school right now, you said?
We didn't last time we met, we have two now. So the information I use to recommend to you what we do with masking is local data with students, which is two, local data with staff, zero, community data, which is there, and what the state is giving us for information.
Right.
So I, clearly you're recommending no change, I'm recommending no change. And also of note, the administrators must, I've received, I assume the other administrators received something from NDOE that says that the COVID up, the COVID rules that were in place, the whole state plan on mitigation procedures, when we, remember we backed off the masks and the distancing and all that, all of that as a, as a body of work ends June 30th of this year. And it's going to shift to something, as we look at summer school, that looks more, I can't tell you exactly what it's going to look like because I haven't read it, but it's going to look more like the seasonal flu. And the fact that this problem will never go away, it's not going to be completely mitigated, so we're going to have to manage it. Which I'm hoping means that if anybody gets COVID, it's not a mandatory five day away and then five day of masking in the future. It's way too early to tell that, but we've had very little of that. But it's kind of hard when somebody has no symptoms and they have COVID and they have to stay out of the building for five days and they can't come to work because they have to. Just to say, I feel okay, I had it, it's behind me, now I'm ready to come to work. And it might be less than five days, but nice to have that flexibility with our workforce, to be honest with you. So that would be the piece I'm really looking forward to if the state backs off it. But that whole body of work sunsets June 30th, like it doesn't count anymore, and it'll be replaced with something that looks more like, you know, influenza A management. Don't come if you're sick, kind of thing, yeah.
Still the 15%.
Yeah, which is in bed in place for years.
Been in place for years, absolutely, yeah. Okay, any other comments on the COVID stuff? Nope, and let's move on to number five, and I look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mary and CJ, all in favor? Okay, and we'll move on to six, and the superintendent's report.
I have a very quick update, and it's all about events, it's the time of year. I'll just remind the board and the community that pre-K step update is tomorrow, which means we've done our screening and our newest group of kids will be coming in tomorrow. They'll arrive around nine, and they're going to go into the pre-K classrooms and do some things for about a half hour to 45 minutes, and our kindergarteners, so our kindergarten, one of our kindergarten teachers is going to open her room for the pre-kers to come in because we're telling them they're about ready for kindergarten, and they are. So they get to spend some time with Lindsay Crawford, and her group's going to go over with Ms. Lazard, and she's going to take care of all the kindergarteners. So we're just shuffling some kids around, and we're going to have the parents stay in the calf, and the kids are going to go off and have some fun and learn some things. So that's going to be pretty exciting for them tomorrow. Last assembly is actually tomorrow too, so at 2:00 PM, 2:05, we'll be having our last assembly for parents and kids in the traditional way, and that'll be on, it's the six, or we, seven and eight cohort, and it'll be on the rafting and ropes trip, as well as a little bit of literacy fair, which was super cool, and I gave you guys an update on that. On Monday, we're doing the school-wide celebration because we reached our school-wide goals through PBIS, and we're going to be throwing an ice cream party at the end of every lunch on Monday. Kids will hear about that tomorrow, so don't say anything, I think they're going to watch the tape, and you guys can't tell your kids. So the bottom line is they'll hear about that tomorrow from Jen or somebody. Pre-create PK graduation is also on Monday at 1:30, and that's always super fun, they're this tall and they're wearing the caps and gown. Wednesday at 9:15 AM is the Sanford High School walkthrough, I know some of you like to come to that.
Wednesday?
Wednesday at 9:15, and it's 9:15-ish, it's never a science. And what we'll do is, I'll meet the bus, we'll have them come in through the fifth grade doors, which is the middle school that end, we'll have the kids ready, they'll come through to pomp and circumstance. Mike will have some cameras set up and use the security cams, they'll come in, but they'll go out the bus door, so we'll bring all the littlest grades up to the corner and maybe out the door, and then they gather at the sign for a photo, put them back on the bus, and they go back to Sanford High School. So 9:15-ish is, we, we run it when they show up.
Yep.
And they'll be in full, and they graduate that evening. Congratulations to the class of 2022. Thursday's our eighth grade graduation at 6:00 PM, and we're shooting for outside on the, on the field like we have the last two years. Incliment weather, Andy and I and the team were talking about it 24 hours in advance. If they say it's going to rain, we're going to say it's going to rain and we're going to move in. Because we have to make a decision at some point regardless of what really happens with the weather. We're planning on being outside, and then a week from Friday, or the last day of school, we're going to do an award assembly in the gym for some awards that we want to give out to some different grades. That's with, that's, that's our awards assembly, it's not assembly, it's with the kids and the staff. That'll last about 45, 50 minutes, and then we're going to go right into field day. And each of the cohorts gets to go out and enjoy field day, and then they have some classroom activities. If it rains, field day will be all classroom activities, and each cohort has a plan. It really won't be field day, because we have to be outside for that. And then at 2:30, the bell rings, and we'll all blow bubbles at them as they get on the bus. We're going to try to hold the buses so the parent pickup, so I have time to go from there to there, which we never do. Lori and I can never make it, so we're going to be like, we're not going to tell the kids this either, we're going to hold the bell. Don't tell them, until we can get down there, then we're going to ring the bell so we can see them. So they'll be out around 2:31-ish, but these kids out front will be out on time. And that's our plan for the last day of school.
How many pre-K new students do we have?
We had, I got to map it in my head, we have 19 that had signed up and came in for the dial and the other, yeah. We're going to, we're looking at a class of 24 right now, right now. I won't have 24 kids in here tomorrow, but we're looking at 24 registrations. So I might be talking to you this summer, if I have room, I can get us to 24 with, with eight, with three adults. Sometimes the state can say, yeah, you can take 25, 26, but I need to ask permission, and I get it in writing. We get up beyond that, we might be looking at putting another ed tech in that room. Because we have to, it's a state law. Again, we've got to watch those numbers, and I'll come to you with what do you want to do? Do you want to say we're done, or do we want to add an ed tech, or what do you want to do? And that's what we do when our, when our, our enrollment increases. So keep an eye on it, we're right there in that bubble. When we've seen key people come in, not move out. They come in in the fall, they don't seem to move out in the fall. We know they're moving out now, but we don't know they're coming in till August, and then they show up, it happens a lot. So I'll keep you posted on that.
Okay.
And that's it, thank you.
Any questions or comments about any of the upcoming activities?
I just have a question, finance and personnel director. The nutrition account was at 101%, so what do we do there?
So basically, this year, obviously nutrition is, is in a different ballgame, okay? And only this year. So we have, the school has received almost $168,000 in revenue, state subsidy for nutrition, okay? Which is way higher than the $80,000 I'm budgeting, okay? It had been a question I had been asking, I wanted to ask the auditors and couldn't until this week.
Yes.
Okay, and I found out the answer.
Okay, good.
So basically what the auditors told me is because these revenues, these extra revenues I got in were to help cover for the extra food we had to buy and the extra repairs we had to take on. So there was an adjustment to the budget for $25,000. So the revenue side increased by $25,000, and then the expenditure sides in nutrition for repairs and for food, in total, one was, the repairs were 15 and the, and the food was 10. So it will?
Even out.
It'll even out, yeah. So I, it won't be in the red anymore. Because I was panicking, it's the first time in 10 years I was already.
Right.
Oh my God.
I was like, what do you mean 101%?
Yeah, but that's, and that's why there was a lot of panic for me when it, when I couldn't get ahold of an auditor for a while. Because I mean, it's, it's little things like that, that I like to have somebody to talk to, to be saying, listen, I'm seeing this as an issue, I need to find a way to deal with it and deal with it appropriately before it becomes 101%.
All right, we're good then.
Good.
But yeah, actually we, Lisa and I, we, I, we made those adjustments today, actually.
Any other questions for any of the administrators or for John?
We'll just, for special ed, are we, you said we're going to be audited or whatever?
Yes.
That happens this school coming up?
Next school year, yeah, it happens every five years.
Do they ever tell you when, or you don't?
Well, we're not even sure, we'll have a visit. What they do is they, they do a desk audit first, and then they may say, we don't need to do a visit. They did a visit last time, they were here for half a day.
Yeah, okay.
And, but hopefully I'm going to try to do the desk audit so that they don't have to do a visit, that's what I'm shooting for. So, but if they do, they do, you know?
Yeah.
Any others? No, we're all set, then we're going to move on to progress monitoring and NWEA.
So we just finished, actually, the NWEA for the spring. We closed the window yesterday, which can, which will give us the data that we're going to look at. And then the state window closes the 10th, so all of our results will then be sent off to the state. And by September, we should have that information back. So we'll have the state reports from fall to spring, and it will be the second year we have that. So we'll be able to then start using some of the comparisons. What I did was I sort of took, I took each grade level, actually each classroom, this is the first, one of the kindergarten classrooms. And what you see is they take the math and the reading. And I thought, because we're looking at the growth from fall to spring, this will tell you the percentage of kids that met or exceeded their projected RIT score. So in the fall, when they take the NWEA, the test itself, or however they do in the fall, projects a score for them to get in the spring, and growth by so many points. So this will say how many kids actually met that projected or exceeded it. And so 100% of the kindergartners in this classroom met their projected score, and 76.9% of the kids met or exceeded in reading. And then, so you'll see down below, the percentage of projected growth met is the amount that some kids not only met their growth, but far exceeded their growth in reading, and in math, and then in reading. So 13 out of the 13 kids did that in math, and then 10 out of the 13 in reading. So that was the first kindergarten class. The next kindergarten class looks very similar, 100% still met, met or exceeded in math, and then almost 82% for reading, and their projected growth, they grew far more than they were expected to grow. So that's really, that's good data. First grade, similar, we had 13 out of the 18 kids met or exceeded their projected growth and the growth in math, and then 65% in reading. You see that we only assessed 18 kids, or only 18 kids had valid scores in math versus the 20. That means fall to spring, only 18 out of our 20 had the math score. And I, it's probably absenteeism, you know, when kids were out so much, we probably, there were probably two that we didn't get to assess at some point, so. But yes, so we take a look at, at that. Still not horrible. 85% for second grade, 72% met and exceeded in reading. Third grade, kind of an area of need, we'll need to take a closer look at. Only 30% of our kids met or exceeded in math and reading. So we want to take a look at that group of kids and figure out, moving forward next year, where do we need to provide additional support? Now that is a class of 20, what, three or four right now, and they will be two fourth grades next year. So that will give us some good information and a, maybe smaller group to figure out how we can flex group them and put some things into place for them. Fourth grade, this is one of the fourth grades, 83% in both, reading and math. And then this is the other fourth grade, it's 75% met in math or exceeded and 50% in reading. But again, looking at their projected growth, those that are showing growth are growing by more than what's been projected. So also an important number to look at. We have fifth grade, another group that we've been watching as they move up through the grades, a few of them on RTI plans, a few IEPs, so a group that tends to get quite a few supports anyway. But that's not a big enough growth for me, so I would be taking a look at that group moving forward next year. Same, and this is the other fifth grade group. Sixth grade, you know, knowing that we did something a little bit different for them this year with a two-person team, concerned about how they started the year, but as we looked at how they ended the year, you look at the growth in reading that many of them made in this particular group and then in this group. So this other sixth grade class too, and there was quite a bit of growth, especially in the reading side for this group. And then we had seventh grade, which is a concern moving forward. And then that's the other seventh grade group, a little bit better. Of course, we can drill down into this and go student by student, we don't do that here, but we do that at the cohort and the classroom level. And then the eighth grade that's leaving. Which is a little concerning when you have negative growth, so, yeah. That's one class, and then the other one was a little bit better.
There's only six children?
Yes, so there was 12 in that eighth grade, so six in, yeah, there's 12 overall in the eighth grade class right now.
Percentages always look bad with small numbers.
Yes, right, yeah.
One can throw it way off.
Yeah, small groups, exactly, yeah. I want, so this is sort of the district summary, which gives us a snapshot of all the grade levels. And what you look at is, the blue bar is the observed growth, so how much growth they made. And then the diamond is what the projected growth was. So we can kind of see whether or not they made their projected growth if the blue bar and the diamond are either overlapping or just right on top. So you can see basically what I, you know, what we said was kindergarten was right where they needed to be, second grade, fourth grade. And this is in reading, sixth grade, you can see the growth there. Fifth was close, third grade almost, so this is just the, the district snapshot.
Is the projected growth a state level, or is it based on where they started and how much?
Yeah, it's the students, and based on where they started, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, student by student. And then the state does have benchmarks, you know, and they'll do below grade level, you know, on the standards.
But that's not this?
That's not this, no, no. And then math, you'll see the snapshot there, it's a little bit better. You'll see the, the growth.
Is this the first year that you've had the projected growth, or I feel like it's the first year we've seen this?
No, I typically try and do the bar graph one for you, but because they've changed, they had changed the norms, you know, a couple of years ago, so it's, it's, I think we've only had it for now for a couple of years on the, with the new norms.
Okay.
This is easier to understand.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, so that's the snapshot there. The other piece was, because we were using iReady this year, I, well, I felt this was important, and it's not so easy to see. If you look across the bottom here, I know the numbers are hard, I can sort of read them. What we're looking for here is, across the bottom are the percentages of where they performed on their first diagnostic in the fall. So that red on the far side here, this is if kids, that would show up in this bar if they were three or more grade levels below. The red is two grade levels below, the yellow is one. This is early in the grade level that they're currently in, and then the last bar is where they should be or above grade level. And so what we're seeing here for kindergarten as an entire kindergarten class is, they didn't have anybody in the beginning of the year here, so this says 0%. They had 4% of their kids that were two or more grade levels below, and now you don't see any red in that bar. We had 73% that were one grade level below when they started in the fall, and that's down to 4%.
So that's good.
So huge. And then those kids that are performing right now And then those kids that are performing right now at around the early K, even though they've been in kindergarten for the year, that went from 12% to 23%. And then when you look at where the kids are, some of them are already here in the fall. They were about at 12%, of them. But now we've got 73% of those kids that are either at or above grade level. And that's in math. And what you see on this side with this bar is that this is their typical growth, and they've exceeded that because 133% is showing typical growth. So kindergarten with iReady, and remember with iReady, when they take that diagnostic, it generates a pathway for them based on what they need. And so by having the teachers have this kind of data and then continue to use the pathway, and they do the diagnostic three times a year, so that pathway adjusts for them every time they take it. So I just wanted you to see this quickly. So here was first grade. Again, we're not seeing any red, we're seeing more than 100% on the typical growth. And you're seeing numbers from like 5% in the green here at the end up to 45%. And we're seeing the class, 90% were here, one grade level below, that's now at 40%. And this is, you know, in all domains. So if kids haven't, weren't here for some of it at the beginning, or they've missed some of it, then these are the domains of geometry, measurement, and data numbers sense. And, you know, all of those domains are assessed here. And so again, we can drill down, the bottom of this page that you can't see is student by student, where they were when they started, where they are now. And then when you get, drill into each student, you'll see where their strengths and weaknesses are. So teachers can use this data moving forward. In fact, the workshop day in June that we have planned in the afternoon, staff will be looking at this kind of data for the kids that they're having next year. This is second grade. We were looking at one second grader this afternoon, just kind of doing a little celebration because two grade levels. He started on, at the kindergarten level his first diagnostic, and he is now at second grade level where he needs to be. So on his last diagnostic this year.
So was it 385% or something?
Yeah.
It was a number of percent.
It was huge.
You know?
It was huge. This is third grade. Which overall isn't horrible, but the yellow bar is a bit large. And then they have not met their typical growth, they're only at 69%. So moving forward next year, we'll want to really work on that. Fourth grade.
But the NWEA also showed the problem with the third grade.
Yes, and which is nice to have now two pieces of information showing the same, yes, showing the same thing. Yeah, yeah. This is fourth, this is fifth as a grade level. So even though, you know, they're still meeting the typical growth, but we still have some kids that are in those low two bars that we want to make sure we're moving.
But even those are going up percentages?
Yes, absolutely. In every one of these, the percentages have changed and the bars are shifting. Which is a good sign. This is sixth grade again, 173% beyond, you know, the typical growth. So those that are growing are growing leaps and bounds. So just summary for me, iReady is showing growth as, the progress in iReady is showing growth as measured by both iReady and NWEA, just as you say. You can see that both assessments are showing similar information. Because the iReady diagnostic designs that personal pathway, grades K to 2 next year would like to use iReady for reading. And what that means is similar, they'll stop using NWEA in K and 1, and at the beginning of the year in 2, and they're going to use the iReady diagnostic because they can get more information. And then it creates that personal pathway for them. So now kids in K to 2 will have a personal pathway for reading and math. So that will give them the skills that they need at their own level. And then for reading, second grade, second grade will take the NWEA for math and reading at the end of the year to get ready for the state assessment, because they have to take that in third grade. So it will give them a chance to take the NWEA in the spring next year to be ready for the state assessment in third grade. And then, you know, the data continues to improve because I think the consistency of the iReady math program and then the work we've been doing with the reading and the writing has been consistent right up through at least K to 5. So that's my spiel. If you have any questions, I can try you.
Yeah, I think this way of reporting out is probably easiest for, at least for me, for the board to understand and to see where the growth is in the different grade levels and.
Pictures.
Pictures.
Anybody else have any questions for Lori? Thank you so much for providing all that for us, Lori. All right, then we'll move on to number eight, and there were no committees that met this month, so. We had no committee report. Okay, so we're going to move on to number nine now, which is new business. And 9-1 is going to be switched with 9-2 according to our agenda change. And so we'll look at the 0-200 scoring plan.
Before we get into this, this is going to be another presentation with some artifacts that'll be handed out. They may have already been handed out, and Mike and Lori are going to lead this piece. But I want you to know that we're going to share data of students with students' names. Let me disclose that it's Amanda Cormier, our secretary's two girls. She gave us permission to put their names up there, and the data is not real. It's just for demonstration purposes, to show how we get to an average versus a 1 through 4. So you're going to see names, the data is something that Mike made up and put in there. And I said, "Make sure you make the Cormier girls look very smart, Mike," and they are. But I want you to know that and be like, "Why are those names up there?" We have permission, and the data is something just for demonstration purposes only.
Just give me a minute.
I thought you just told me to close my computer.
I think it worked, I don't know what's gone on.
No.
Very good.
You got it?
Okay. Oops, that worked?
Well, it says your Chromebook, or your MacBook, so there we go.
All right, as Mr. Ross mentioned, we will be looking at Amanda's students or children. But this data is not their actual work. It's just to represent what the parent will see when they access the portal via the browser. There's also an app that pushes out information and alerts. So if there's new homework or missing homework, you should be prompted and notified when those happen in real time. So as you can see, when you log in, it's quite simple. You have your children's names here, and underneath that, I'll zoom a little bit tighter, you have their overdue work, their upcoming work, and recent grades that have been posted. So like, click on Riley Cormier, I'll zoom back here. You'll quickly see the overdue work that's needed. And you can click on those and get information on that, find the assignments, read the instructions, and proceed to do the work. Upcoming work, so you can be prepared for what's to come in the future. And as you can see over here, work has been completed, and it is percentage. So this would be for the 6, 8 class, or classes, and their homework assignments are being generated and pushed out as percentage.
So this is Brightspace?
This is Brightspace, yes. And those numbers match the Sanford Junior High's A, B, C, D calculations. I threw in here just for fun, a portfolio item, so students can, after they're done their work, they can take a picture of it and then post it on their portfolio, and you can go in, click on it, and then see the work and any teacher feedback or student comments that have been made related to their work. You can also, the teachers can grade this portfolio of work and give them a score to be put in the report card or their.
So, yeah, so the goal is obviously is to get parents to log in on a regular basis, and if they have the app and they're getting notifications regularly, that grades have been, you know, new grade has been added or to your child's profile, then they can log in and see that. So this is the parent page and what they can see.
And you did say that they have, you can get the app on your phone as well, correct? So you can be notified on your phone, you don't have to go.
Yep.
Right. So then you can drill down, and you can go even deeper and see all the classes your students in, and see all the work and grades that they've received in your student, your child's portfolio and their courses. And then if you have multiple children in the school, you can quickly just jump from one child to another and get more information, again, overdue work, upcoming work. And as you can see here, this child is in the K-2, K-5 core classes. So instead of having percentage-based scores, they have what we are currently used to with a proficiency-based scoring. And again, we have a nice cute little portfolio submission by the student, a drawing that they had done. And then you received, this was me, but it would be the teacher's name telling him this beautiful drawing, good use of colors. You can download and save this file if you want. This is just a quick presentation or representation of what you'll expect next year through Brightspace, keeping tabs on what your child's doing, seeing what work they have to, what work is coming up. And any notifications or posts from the teachers will be here, so you can stay on tabs with current topics and news. So that's the Brightspace portal for parents.
Mike, if I could just jump in, we have a couple of people who have elementary students in here, and I think it's with three, so it's interesting that right now you get your weekly memos from each of you. I see those, when they go up to you, I'm blind copy, so I see what goes up to the parents. What we're doing this week, how we're doing it, these are the words of the week. They do a nice job with all of that. And then you see your, you see your teachers, you know, during parent-teacher conferences. This will allow you to see everything that's going on pretty much in the classroom, and those newsletters will be like what their homepage looks like. So for those of you that are the parents that aren't getting those in the upper grades, we don't send home the weekly update in seventh grade. But for those of you that have 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, you'll now have access to it. It's just that you need to just open up Brightspace and look at it. Whereas everything else was pushed out to you before. And when we do open house in the fall, we're going to hopefully have every parent here and teach them how to use this, because we really want them to use it. So they'll know exactly where their children are.
So you communicate with the teacher through here instead of like emailing?
Right, because we're emailing right now, that's what I was just mentioning, yeah.
And messages will be sent back and forth from parent to teacher here, parent to student, I mean, teacher to student as well.
A question, the communication between the parent and the teacher, are the students looked in on that? Like, the only students can see what I'm asking the teacher?
No. Most of the communication between the parent and the student are parent and student specific. A lot of times the teacher will have feedback in maybe homework assignment to the student, and you'll, you'll be previewed to that, where then you can see that and then respond or question the teacher on that. But you and the teacher's communications is private, separate. You have to direct communication between you and them.
So at the end of the trimester, when all of these grades are in Brightspace, but we need to generate then the report, as teachers are setting up their grade books here, there's a button in the setup side that says export to the student information system. So all of the grades then get pulled into Infinite Campus. And the way Mike has set up the categories, and the way we're setting them up in Brightspace and Infinite Campus, it's going to talk to each other. So at the end of the trimester, teachers will have to go into Infinite Campus and just verify where their, the assignments or assessments are going to the right category, enter the comments for the trimester. And then these two reports, one which is K to 5, and one which is 6, 7, and 8, will come out of Infinite Campus. So that's where all the calculations are happening, and the reports are being generated. Because I know there was a question about teachers having to go into two systems. Well, we use two systems now, they use Master Connect in Google Classroom, or Master Connect in CSO, or whatever. But this will be specifically Brightspace 99.9% of the time. And then at the end of the trimester, there'll be a little bit of work in Infinite Campus that teachers will have to do to verify things and to enter comments, and then this, these reports will be generated from there.
These report cards you're talking about, yes.
Yes, correct. So the report cards, so the K-5 one that you're looking at is purple. And then the blue is an example of a middle school.
So for the middle school one, will the parents expect to see for each one of these, like under English, they'll have a grade for their effort, and they'll have a grade for speaking and listening, and a grade for language. There won't be just an average of everything for English period. It'll be for each.
For each standard, yes.
Because we're still maintaining proficiency-based, standard-based teaching and learning.
But for the 6 through 8 kids, it'll be the 0 through 100.
Yeah.
And reported out as an A, D, Z.
Yeah, but it won't be.
Scales down below.
It'll be, there'll be an individual grade for each of the, yeah.
This is directly lined up with Sanford's. We double and triple check up the meeting every week, because that was one of the requests for parents of Sanford, so that's what these two used as a template.
So if they met something in the first trimester, the grade would be there, and then you probably wouldn't see it for 2 and 3 if it's not anything that's continued on.
Right, unless it's revisited, more challenging, it could be lower even.
Yeah.
If it's more challenging.
So on the report cards, they will not be getting 0 to 100, they'll be getting A, B, C, and D, correct? Just like they do at the Sanford Middle School.
And they don't have any pluses or minuses on their grading?
No. No, but you can, but you can, but the thing about it is, the parents can go into the portal, and they can see what their actual number is. For instance, if you get an A.
Yeah.
Right, for each individual.
The parent can go in and see if that A represents a 95, or a 97, or a 93, just barely, or whatever. So the number will be in Brightspace.
In Brightspace, yes.
Yeah, I mean, just, I don't know.
On the, on the middle school report card, on the top left has the grading 1 through 4 proficiency level. Are you guys going to take that out, though?
That's for school values.
Those are, for school values and effort.
Those don't get averaged, like how well you work with others.
Those aren't going to.
Yeah, those don't get averaged.
Those won't impact their overall, you know, score in math or English, but they will be, you know, monitored and reported on, put on a different.
School values of the third class.
School values and effort will be still on the 1 to 4 scale, yes.
Which is helpful, because if you see a particular academic area that's strong, and you see a strong effort number, makes sense. If you see an academic area and it's questionable, and it's like a, you know, a D or something, and you can see the effort, so it's 1, and it kind of makes sense to you as a parent, what's going on? But we're hoping there's a lot of communication between the teacher and the parents so that this doesn't surprise anybody. It should be real time if possible. This, the report card, this whole system could be, you don't even need a report card, but I think it's important to have a report card. I think people want report cards. But systems today are built up so that you don't need to have a reporting date because everything's right there in front of you in any given moment in real time. But I think it's important to have something at the end of every trimester in front of the parents and have parent-teacher conferences.
Any other questions, I vote?
Thank you for your efforts, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mike.
Four for effort.
Thank you, Lori, and whoever else helped.
Oh, it was, I mean, they, yes, kudos to Mike and Lori, they're tired of their Monday morning meetings with me, I'm sure. And the staff, meeting with them, I'm sure, they've done a great job. People really roll up their sleeves and then in time. People really rolled up their sleeves and in time really worked it. The zero to 100 request was timely in that we were going to Bright Space anyway. So while as we build Bright Space, let's build it with this as the intention, not where we're heading prior to that. So the timing actually does, does work out pretty well for us.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, a quick question, just like on like a homework assignment or something, when they say a spelling test or something, not homework, if they say a spelling test, are they going to, kids going to come home with the result from that? Or is that going to get right on here and then we can see?
It will go on Bright Space, but yes, they, if it's a paper, and a teacher's put a score on it, it should come home.
Okay.
The teachers have been putting their scoring calculations based on zero through 100 on most of their assignments too. So you'll see, you know, they got 95% out of 100 versus a three or a four.
Yeah.
So it'll help you, you know, clearly see what happened there.
The one place you might, if you go into Bright Space and see a one to four, or sort of looks like a one to four, is a rubric that a teacher might be using. But I've worked with the middle school on how to break up their rubrics so that as they're assessing the kids on mastery of something versus not mastery, it still has the zero to 100 points at the top, and then the, the total calculation at the bottom. I think Mike had one example, if you wanted to bring that up.
That was pretty good, I thought.
Uh, there was a science and a writing one, yes. The writing was probably the best example.
Writing rubric was excellent.
Yeah. So what we have here is you're still going to see, you know, your mastery, near mastery in progress beginning, but it has a descriptor there, so you'll know how kids did with that writing piece. But what we did was we put the top, the numbers across the top with the A, B, C, D. So as a teacher goes down through in grades, and there's five criteria here, as a teacher grades each box or clicks each box for the score, it will total as it goes, and you'll see the score at the bottom. So if a student gets a 93 or more as they work their way down through that rubric, then they still get an A and close to mastery, whereas if it's an 85 or more and it drops down. So we've worked on the calculation to make that work no matter how many criteria they have on the side.
There's a lot of classes still using rubrics based on some of their projects. And as long as the descriptors are clear and concise, you can, you know, see how they're doing, what they're doing, and why they got that score.
I can give you a real, but just a quick, rubrics is an educational talk. I'll help you out a little bit for those who might be like, okay, rubrics is, it's kind of a scoring chart. If you think about getting your main state driver's license, you gotta do a bunch of things. First thing is put on your seatbelt, put in gear. You got parallel parking, and then you go through the stop signs, you do a bunch of things. You can fail your test and not get a license on any one of those things. You're going to do five things right and do one thing wrong, and they don't give you a license. So standards-based is, we always look at the pieces of the learning and try to grade them and say, okay, four things you've done great, one of them we're really going to focus on because the other four you've nailed it. You know, or even in the trades with plumbing, you can be great with drains, not so much with bringing the water into wells, you know? Great, we're going to work on that. So what we've done is we've taken the rubrics where all the pieces of that learning have to occur, which the teacher spent a lot of time in the last few years on, and have been able to now, as Lori said, calculate and average where you are in those places. So you, yeah, you still get your license, but you should, but you're kind of like a 70, a 69.5, you're just barely a 70 on parallel parking, it'll get you a license, but I, you know, driving a new, you know, Honda Civic, I want you to make sure you don't hit my bumper. So work on that skill. But it gives you, it gives you an idea of how they are on the zero to 100, and it calculates a grade. So that's what a rubric does for you, and it breaks down the learning and gives a particular amount of measurement to that piece of learning, because it's very few places in school where you're learning one thing. It's holistic.
So I just wanted to bring it up because you may see something come home that still has the mastery, near mastery, but it still will have the percentage pieces to it as
Any other questions or comments? If not, then I would look for.
It's at July workshop date.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you need to take a motion.
Yeah, you're going to vote on this.
We're going to, we're going to vote on this.
We're going to vote on this.
We're going to vote on this plan.
We're going to vote on this tonight?
Yeah, okay. Yeah. We asked them, they did it. It's ready. It has what we asked for, it keeps the standard, trans, transposes them into numbers and ABCs. And it, for the middle school, it's exactly like what they have at the Sanford Middle School. So if, if you were going to Sanford Middle School, you'd be getting exactly the same thing. Okay? So what I would look for is a motion to accept the new grade scoring policy as presented and direct the administration to put this new scoring plan in place by September of 22.
So moved. Did you get that, Jen?
Yes.
That was a lot.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Amanda. Any further discussion?
So there's no actual written policy to go with it, it's just?
It's a directive.
It's a directive.
Okay. Because you did use the word policy, so I was just making sure.
I, yeah.
Yes, and in this, in this motion, it says policy.
Well, we don't want that.
No.
Can you?
Just scratch that word.
Reword that.
To use the new, just change policy to plan.
Thank you.
To use the new scoring.
Jen, could you reread it with plan, please?
Yeah, could you?
It's a motion by Mary to accept the new score plan as presented and direct the administration to put the new score plan in place by September 2022. Amanda seconded the motion.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
Sounds great.
Should it be scoring plan or score plan? I don't know, I mean, she, she just said.
What does it say? It says, we said, it's, okay, we're back.
It's, it's a new, to accept the new grade score plan as presented.
Yeah.
Doesn't need to be scoring?
Grade score.
Yes, grade score.
Yep.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Call those in favor. Five and O. And thank you again, Lori and Mike, for all your headaches and.
Meetings.
Meetings and.
But you figured it out, smart people.
We do a lot of work. Thank you so much. Okay, now we'll go to setting a date for the July workshop.
I was going to suggest to the, to the board, CJ, you had a day you, you wanted to stay away from, and I don't remember what that was.
I would actually prefer a Monday, any Monday.
Do half a Monday or stay away from it?
To have a Monday, yeah.
How about Monday, the 11th, which we could do, it's the first day of, we could either do the 11th or the following, which would be what, the 18th, which would be the second week of summer school. I'd like to do it when we have kids back in here, because I know when we have kids back in here, Andy will have most everything in place for summer school, which means we'll be able to travel the building and have a meeting, workshop either in the conference room or in here. It gives him almost a month to do some of the big stuff with Johnson and Jordan and some other things while no, while kids and teachers aren't in the building.
You're not talking about June, you're talking about July.
Talking about July. Yeah, we're talking about July because it's.
So the 11th is the first day?
The 11th is the first day of summer school.
Yeah, we should do it at the first.
We'll be so busy, right?
We'll go the 18th?
We'll go the 18th.
How about in the morning?
Yeah, do you, whatever.
At least before noon.
You have been doing historically like 9:00 AM meetings.
I know, I know. When you get up at four in the morning, you want to go someplace.
Monday is good for me.
Monday, July 18th at 9:00 AM.
Well, I'm at 5:00 at your house, get the coffee going.
I know, my day is done at noon, I'm all done.
I see you all.
Okay, so we'll set it for Monday, July 18th at 9:00 AM.
Sounds great. We'll put it in the minutes.
Thank you, thank you all for giving that.
Okay.
All business? None? Do we have any all business?
No, no, we're, we're good. This is it for, for this kind of, for voting in this school year. We're, it's a wrap. We'll have our workshop and set up for next year.